Okay, Eric, we gotta get started.
I've lost control. We'll start the meeting. All right, let's do a roll call. Teresa?
Here.
Gail Merritt?
Here.
Jason Beeby is not going to be with us today. Is Janet here tonight?
Yes.
Janet Hutcherson? Thank you.
Patricia.
Patricia Youngman.
I'm here.
And Mr. Papke?
Here.
Okay, so we have, and I'm here unfortunately, so that makes six of us, so that's what we will have for tonight. Just a reminder, if you're not speaking, please mute and identify yourself before speaking for, because it's easier to identify who it's coming from. So if you would, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Forrester, are there any additions to the agenda?
I do have a couple announcements regarding the agenda. This is Steve Forrester, city manager. I'd like to just acknowledge that Captain Larry is acting chief while Dale spends a few days away from work. So thank you, Captain Larry, for joining us. Also, during my city manager's report this evening, we will have a report from Zach at Meadow Lake, some updates at Meadow Lake from Zach Lampert, and also Kelsey Lucas from Edco, and Kim Daniels, our chamber manager, will do an update on the local business, Corona Business Task Force grant program. So those are the, a little bit finer detail of the agenda tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, and the changes, minor changes that I would like to make, I would like to have our attorney, Jared Reed, make, give us a brief update on the code violation issue that we discussed last week. Just give us an update of where we are. And under number six, where it says COVID-19 update discussion, I would like to move that up when Muriel makes her present, following when Muriel makes her presentation.
Would you like to have Mr. Reed under staff report?
I would like to have him follow, under staff reports, yes. And I would like to have him follow Kim and, Kim's presentation.
Okay, perfect.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Okay, with that, the minutes to the regular meeting forward, April 28th have been circulated. Is there a, are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as, the consent agenda circulated, the minutes as circulated?
This is Gail. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Gail, thank you. Is there a second?
Teresa, I'll second.
Thank you, Teresa. Again, any concerns, questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Let's go through the, through the sequence. Gail?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Patricia?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And my mayor votes aye as well. Okay, next, visitors appearances and requests. Muriel, would you like to present, please?
Sure. So Mayor Eiffelman and city councilors, I want to thank you for having me back. And the, I wanted to give you an update. It'll be a pretty quick report. First of all, you know, our reality is viruses, we're going to be living with a virus for a while, until we have an immunity and have vaccines. So we have to think about how to do this in a different way. And part of what we did in this past week is we submitted our plan to the state of Oregon. It was submitted last Friday, and it really included things like, there were certain requirements on it. We had to include the prevalence, where we were at, which ours is low. We had to really, and sometimes people ask me about the cases. It's not about the number of cases, even if we end up having a spike. It's about how are you protecting your hospital and emergency rooms? And so making sure, it's the number of cases in the hospital, and the number of cases reporting to the emergency room with COVID-like illness. So we have to kind of monitor that the whole way. And part of what I want to do is really thank the community, and this is really about the community, on sort of following the guidelines and helping us keep our cases low. So part of what we submitted was also minimum testing. So we need to do, it's basically you need to do 30 tests per 10,000 people every week. So that's a regional measure, and we applied as an eight-county region, so that was met. The first week, we were at 34.2. The second week, we were at, I think this last week, we were at 31, or around 31. So we're still meeting that, but we're hoping to increase testing. We also want to make sure we have tests for a long-term care facility. We do not want to see an outbreak there. So we're really following through on all of those kinds of things. I think some of the other things is we need to make sure that if we have someone on isolation, we have a facility they can go to. We've worked a couple different ways to do that with vouchers, with Neighbor Impact. We're also looking at a few other options in relationship to that. I think the other piece was a regional piece where the hospital had to attest that they had, or could have, a 20% increase in COVID-19 patients, and they would be able to support that. And that is true. We got a letter from St. Charles. And what they're looking at now is most of the COVID, well, actually, all of the COVID-19 patients in our region would actually go to the Bend Hospital, because they have the, you know, the updated ICU and all of that there. And then sufficient personal protective equipment, making sure we have that. So we met all of those guidelines we wanted to meet. And then we submitted the plan with all of the letters of support and all of that. So that went in Friday. It already was approved through the governor's office in relationship to meeting all the requirements. And then it went to public health in case they had any questions. And I got one question last night, or the night before, I was texted by someone I know at the State Health Division, asking me a question. I answered it, and that was not an issue. So I'm hoping, I asked her when she thought they would announce results, and she said she hoped midweek, as far as it being out of the public health division. So we're hoping we'll hear something tomorrow. And, you know, part of, part of the message, and Steve heard me say this the other day, is that this really, it isn't, we are going, we want to go to phase one. We want to be able to open facilities with guidelines, which there are guidelines for retail, there's guidelines for restaurants, there's a lot of guidelines. Some are pretty strict, but it's really to protect our population. And so we want to open with guidelines, and then from that point, I think, what's important to me is, we, if we hold the course, and I sort of keep saying, like, stay the course, keep doing what you're doing if you're a high-risk individual. We're face covering, stay home. You know, we have a population of over 25% that are 65 and older. So if you can stay home, do, and continue to do the same things you're doing. A lot of hand washing, all of those things are still really important. The virus has not gone away. If we stay the course, people don't go crazy. People don't, you know, sort of not follow the guidelines and help, help the community out. We, you know, we're hoping that if we continue the way we're going, we would be able to go to phase two in 21 days. That's the guideline. So if you stay the course and you don't have a big surge, you can move. And there's more things open up at that point, so that's what we're hoping for. If we don't follow the guidelines and we have a big surge, I think what we have to think about is how do we protect our hospital system? How do we protect our first responders, EMS, and sort of that whole system? And that's what's incredibly important about this. You've all seen the stories of what's happened across the country when hospital systems have a tough time, and first responders do. So what we want to think about as a community, and I think the message we really want to put out, is that, you know, we stay the course, we continue following some of those guidelines. Yes, things are opening, but there's specific rules that you have to follow to do that. So that's, that's really what we want to see. We, from the health department side, are working with Kim at the chamber. We're creating some videos. We are doing some other things. We're posting everything on our website. We're trying to get packets out to the community that have all the guidelines in them. I know the chamber has it posted on their main page when you, when you look at it. So I think it's really important that people just follow those guidelines. It's been an interesting week, with people not always following guidelines, but that's all I'll say about that. I think what I want people to remember is, if we stay the course, we get to move on to phase two. If we don't, we're not helping our hospital system and not helping our first responders, which includes all of our EMS and all our police and everybody else in the community. Also, at the health department, we have the capacity to do case, case investigation, but if we have a huge spike, it's more challenging for us. We can still do it. But we have to respond to any case within 24 hours, and we have to do that for 95% of the cases. We will do it for 100% of the cases, because we want to make sure that we help any, you know, track anybody and find any new cases. So anyway, that's where we're at, and hopefully we will find out this week and move forward. So questions for me?
I have a question.
Sure.
So I guess some of the concern that I have, and that I've heard some concern throughout the community, is now that more testing is available, of course, more people are getting in those statistics, because personally, I've had three people that I know that were like 98% sure they had COVID. The other two were because they weren't officially tested, because when they called into the hotline, they were told unless they are being admitted to the hospital, they weren't going to be tested. So I'm afraid, what my fear is, and what I've heard around the community is the fear is, the numbers are going to go up, because the testing is going up, and it's becoming more available with a broader spectrum of requirements to qualify to get tested. And so they're afraid that, yeah, we're going to start phase one opening. Numbers are going to go up, which is not going to reflect accurately because of people who weren't tested prior, and then it's going to kick us back to phase one instead of allowing us to move on.
So not necessarily. So I think what ends up happening is the, the number of cases is not as important as how many people are showing up, and is your, is your emergency room being overwhelmed, and is your hospital being overwhelmed? That's what's being measured. So it's not just on cases. So we know that the categories of who can be tested are opening up. We actually want that. We want to be able to test more people. We want people to know if they have it. We really want that. We've even got opportunities now. We were approached by Walmart, their super centers, which there's one in Redmond, is actually going to do some pop-up testing in the parking lots. And they will also bring groups out to other places to do. We have apps that are stepping up, so we have, we know we will see more cases. But the moving to number two and to phase two is not affected by the number of cases, unless it's really hitting your hospital.
My other question is on the isolation part of that. So if you or a family member are diagnosed with COVID-19, where did I come up, 18? So anyways, if someone in your household is diagnosed, what are the isolation protocols as far as children, spouses, things like that? Like for me, example, is I raise my, my grandchild, and I am the person that's responsible for him. So what are the isolation?
So what we're asking people to do is stay in their home, if they can. We understand that's an issue. There are, you know, there are circumstances where we, if you're a contact and you can't be in your home, that's part of what we're trying to find is hotel, or, and we're going to have an agreement with not only Neighbor Impact, but Deschutes County, on if you could stay somewhere else. But most people, I will say, the majority of the cases, as an example, in Deschutes County, have stayed at home. So that, you know, a lot, more of the, like, I know Deschutes just signed an agreement with a hotel in Deschutes County, and it's more for individuals that are potentially homeless, and/or they're in a shelter circumstance, and we need to find housing for them. So that's what that is. And I know it's hard, but unless somebody doesn't want to be in their home around others, they would probably stay at home.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have one. This is Councilor Youngman. You were mentioning that there was going to be 30 tests per 10,000 population?
Right.
And isn't Kirk County about 25,000?
Yeah, so the, so the standard across the state is 30 per 10,000, but that doubles honestly for Kirk County. So, so, but, but here's the thing about testing. It's not measuring Kirk County, it's measuring the region. So the region is actually Kirk, Jefferson, Deschutes, I hope I get this right, Grant, Harney, Wheeler, Lake, and Clamath. So it's the testing average of those eight counties, not just Kirk County.
Thank you.
Other questions? One last question I have, Muriel. I'm hearing all sorts of pluses and minuses about an approved drug therapy. Are they, and maybe, maybe Patricia, you're better at this, on the drug therapy that they've been talking about, has anything been approved, or are they expecting anything to be approved?
So I think that, Patricia, you might know, I just read, so I do think, is it? There's a brand-new one that they have, it hasn't been totally approved with the FDA, but it's an emergency approval. I do believe, and I heard today, that some of those doses were going to be sent to Oregon for people who might be in, like, the ICU. So know that it's not an FDA approval, but it is an emergency approval. So that's the one that is sort of out there. The other positive thing I heard, and I actually read this this morning, was that there are four of the manufacturers for vaccines that are pretty far along in their trials. So they've, they're now doing human trials on, at least of the four companies, at least three of them. One of them is, or a couple of them are saying they potentially, and I know it's really, like, I'm just praying, but it's really early, but there's potentially, they could have something in October. But the challenge is, you have to, you have to have enough doses. So you can come up with a vaccine, but you still have to create a lot of doses. So that, that would be great if something happened by then, but, but we, so. And we'll be working, if, once a vaccine does come out, kind of like we did with H1N1, we'll be working with pharmacies, the health department, the hospital, everybody will get it, so everyone can provide those vaccines.
And all of the retail pharmacists in the area are vaccination certified, so they can just hop right in, and it's not anything out of the ordinary.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, the council, are there any other comments from the council? Muriel, thank you very much for being with us this evening and sharing. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Thanks, Muriel. I'm sure we'll have you back as things continue to develop.
Let's, let's move on, and Kim and Kelsey? Are you with us?
I am with you.
Okay.
They're with you. I just quieted down my children and my dog.
Get the cat, get the cat. Oh.
Cat's fine right now. She's good. Kelsey, I'll let you start.
Okay. Is James on here, iTunes?
He is, he is, and he'll be able to bring up your spreadsheet, and then you can tell him to move ahead. So I'm sure James is listening. There we go, just like magic. Go ahead, Kelsey.
Yeah, so we just opened phase three of our Kirk County grant program this past Monday. The first two phases, these are kind of the stats on the program. So 88% of the applicants were awarded up to the $2,500 in grants. Sole proprietors and independent contractors, they were capped at $1,250, since most of them don't actually have employees, so we tried to even that playing field. And a lot of the companies that did not get approved were either not in Kirk County, or were just operating at the same level that they had been prior to the pandemic, which there weren't many of those. But like, we did have some people from Deschutes and Jefferson County. There was like an Uber driver from Deschutes.
Driver that, that he came to Prineville.
Yeah, he said he dropped off people from the airport here, so he wanted to get a grant. But for the most part, everyone got awarded that applied and qualified. There were 158 businesses that applied to this point, and then 138 were granted. So that's both businesses and the sole proprietors. A lot of the SBA programs, the sole proprietors didn't get much funding in the first round, and then they were kind of tapped out of funds. So they started opening, opening that up to those groups, but they're way behind compared to a lot of the businesses that received federal funding. So total, there's been 218,325 awarded so far, out of the 244,000 that we have available. So we have just about 25, a little over, for the third phase. But then Business Oregon at the state, they just opened up a $10 million funding pool that we could apply for to get additional funding, but then we have to follow all of their guidelines for how that's awarded. So we would be good candidates, because they kind of ask for people that already have grant programs, and then you have to do this whole RFP. So Kim and I have talked about looking at that and seeing if that would be a good fit to add additional funds to the program. But the companies that qualify for that, they can't receive federal funding. They can be sole proprietors. So it's kind of the group of people that's underserved or doesn't qualify for the PPP or EIDL. And then locally, we had 12 businesses give back their grants, because they thought that there are other businesses or people that own their own businesses that might need the money more. So that says a lot about our community and just people wanting to share the wealth with those that have a greater need. And then this portion just kind of talks about the different industries that were impacted and awarded. So it was kind of all across the board. There was construction, manufacturing, wholesale trade, transportation and warehousing, real estate and leasing services, professional and technical services, business administration services, educational services, healthcare, arts, entertainment and recreation, accommodation and food services, and then other miscellaneous service and event sectors. So it impacted pretty much every aspect of our community, which is pretty cool. And then some information on the applicant pool. 89.6% were actual residents of Kirk County, and they have their business here. 70.5% of the business owners leased their space in Kirk County. 29.5% of the businesses own their building. And then 55.5% of the businesses were still open and operating to some capacity. They just might have shorter hours or less employees than they did before all of this. So overall, it's been pretty successful. We were way ahead of the ballgame compared to the rest of central Oregon in general. And then we've had other communities locally ask us how our grant program operates. And then also Facebook's data center community in North Carolina asked for all of our, like, our scoring matrix and basically how our whole system works. So I thought that that was pretty cool, that we wanted to make something happen, and we did. And now other communities are starting to use that framework for their programs, which is cool.
Yeah, and I can just speak to this part of it. So the chamber has been the fiscal agent, so we are the ones that are getting all the paperwork, cutting the checks. We're the Santa Claus of the operation, which has been pretty awesome. But just being involved in a lot of regional meetings right now, I can let you know. And for those of you that were born and raised and grew up in Prineville, what I continually hear on a daily basis is, we're so jealous of Prineville. Like Bend is jealous of Prineville. And I kind of love that right now. Facebook is a huge, right? Facebook is a huge reason for us being able to do the grant program, but it's been pretty seamless. It's been, for cutting checks for over 150 businesses. It's been a really easy process. We've gotten all of the paperwork that we need, and there haven't been any issues. It's been easy for the businesses to get it to us and get what we need. And like I said, with phase three opening up, so phase three is mainly like, we gave out a bunch. We halted, because we needed to know how much we were giving, and then we scored. And so the scoring for everything is really depending on how they answer the questions. So it's like, are you located downtown, gives you a certain, you know, point allotment. How many employees do you have? Are you open during this? I mean, there's, there's many questions, and they all determine the amount of points you get, which then helps determine the amount of money you get. But just like Kelsey said, I have had Madris, Redmond, and Lapine all ask us for, not only, like, how did you do it, but our scoring matrix, our award letters, everything. And so they're, they're learning from Prineville, and I kind of like that.
All right. Good for you.
Yeah, Kelsey, I'm just going to comment something similar for you and Kim. As you guys were ahead of the curve, you've continued a culture of finding a way to get good work done, even good work that's very difficult to get done. And I think that's what, that's foundational to our community. And obviously, having partners like Facebook participate in this kind of effort along with the county and the city is a pretty good testimonial to, to our community. So thanks for your efforts. Well done.
Well, and doing it this way, showing, demonstrating credibility that you have, that, that goes a long way to, to next steps also. So thank you.
Yep. Thank you too.
For helping us fund.
Any questions from the council?
So you were talking about phases. Are you going to go with another round of applications? Or are you going to revisit some of the others?
So we just reopen the application process. We've already awarded everyone that qualifies. So any businesses that didn't get them in the first two rounds, they can apply at this point. Or if businesses are starting to reopen, and they might not have thought that they needed money, but they want to replenish inventory or rehire some employees, that obviously isn't going to make a huge dent, but there'll be more costs coming on as.
Yeah, and we had some businesses that did not apply at first, because they thought they would be okay. And now they're coming, saying, wait a second, we realized this went on longer than we planned. But just to answer your question, Teresa, the only people that did not qualify were either, they weren't an established business, so we had a few businesses that were planning to open in Prineville that never did, or they weren't in Kirk County. But pretty much, if you were an established business in Kirk County, you qualified.
Thank you.
We did a lot of follow-up. We used the Secretary of State website to kind of see how long people have been in business, and that was part of the scoring system, too. And then for people that we weren't sure, we gave them a phone call and just double-checked to make sure that we could fund as many people as possible.
We've done a great job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any last questions? Okay, let's move on. Jared Reed, would you give us an update, a brief update on the code violation issue that was raised at the last meeting, and where we are with, with steps forward?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting, there was some citizen comments that had been made or submitted to council regarding a couple of properties in the neighborhood, and council asked me to look into options, given that the judicial system currently is not hearing these types of matters, and is somewhat not a remedy that we can seek. In regards to the nuisance issue, we've looked into that. We can move forward with options that do not involve the judicial system, and those are ongoing. In regards to the other issue, which is much more of a building code issue, I was able to look into procedures within the Oregon Housing Receivership Act, which we do not have currently within our code. This would allow procedures, if the council were to adopt them, that would give you tools, in your toolbag, so to speak, to deal with, to basically identify properties that would qualify for a potential receivership, and then to exercise that option. and then to exercise that option to make these properties livable and restored. Uh, this is an option that uh, I can present to council in a couple of weeks after having some additional time to uh, to get that material together for a more in-depth uh, presentation on how it works and whether it's right for your city or not.
Great, okay, thank you very much. Zach, I skipped past you. You want to jump in now and tell us about what's going on at Meadow Lakes? Zach?
Yeah, uh, be happy to. Uh, Zach Lampert, Meadow Lakes Golf Course. Uh, just wanted to quickly update the council on uh, the pro shop remodel project that we were able to complete this winter. I'd hope to give you this uh, um, information in person, but it seemed like we were maybe not going to get there anytime soon. And so uh, James will fire up my PowerPoint. I just wanted to show you a few uh, pictures of what we did. So we um, had this locker room space that was directly on the other side of our golf shop wall. And it was a nice locker room, uh, well-built. We just uh, never really utilized it much. Um, so we decided it could be repurposed for pretty minimal cost and uh, made into more pro shop rooms. So you can see we cut through the wall there. That's uh, looking from the uh, old locker room side towards the pro shop. So that's where we broke through, and James, you can go to the next one. So during construction, we really only had to build a couple walls and then just a lot of finish work. So um, in-house contractor were able to do it relatively inexpensive. We were able to come up with some real good furniture that we uh, put in the room, which uh, really classed it up. And so here you can see the final product. This is the new space, um, which is much more roomy, which has come in very handy right now when we need people to be able to socially distance themselves. Our old uh, space wouldn't have allowed for that very well. So this is nice to have a lot of extra space. This is the existing, this is the original part of the pro shop, and you can just see how much more open it is than the old one. Go ahead and go to the next one. So this is looking into the new room. We put most of our clothing in there, um, displayed nicely, and there's enough room for people to walk around and look at everything without being cluttered. Nice and organized, so that, that's really it. Just really quickly wanted to show you that, um, and ask if you guys had any questions about the golf course or this remodel project.
Looks good.
Any questions? Well, I was in it when, when you were just finishing up, Zach. It looks really nice to me. I, I appreciate the efforts you've done, and that's uh, and you did add a little bit of lighting that was necessary in a couple of spots to highlight some, some things. It was nicely done, tastefully done, thank you.
Thanks, our hope is, you know, unfortunately, we uh, opened it, the grand opening was about three days before the shutdown, so we had the golf shop closed for about a month, uh, where we were just taking payment over the phone. We've since reopened it, so we're allowing limited numbers of customers in. And feedback's been really positive. I think uh, eventually it's going to allow us to increase our pro shop sales quite a bit because it almost doubles the size of our retail space, so that'll be good for us moving down. Thanks.
Thank you. Any last questions from the council?
Well, this is Gail, and I just want to comment that I've heard really good things about Meadow Lakes and how people are able to play golf and how they feel safe down there. And also, I want to tell you that there are two young men who truly miss you this spring.
Thank you, Gail. Yeah, we uh, it was a bummer not being able to have the high school golf season. I'm sure all the spring sports uh, felt that um, across the county. But uh, we were very fortunate to be able to stay open through all this. We've uh, worked hard, and the golf industry as a whole's worked hard to um, you know, do what we can to keep it safe and keep ourselves open. And so uh, we're happy to do that. And business has been, it's been pretty good weather, and we've had a lot of customers, so.
Well, and I want one thing to say. I just want to say thank you for letting any student, high schooler that was going to be on the golfing or on the golf team be able to go out and play because it's in my daughter's release, so thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. The least we could do for them. They didn't get to have a season, so.
Right.
Well, thank you. Well, we skipped over the city manager's report, so I'm going to ask city manager Steve to jump in.
Do you want me to do that prior to a number of the council business on uh,
Oh.
the request exempt contract? Why don't we do that first, and I'll follow up with my city managers?
You're right, okay. The exempt uh, exempt contract for Barnes Butte Pedestrian Bridge, Eric Klon.
City engineer, Klon, city engineer. We've talked about this opportunity several times with council. With that said, we've noticed this exemption of the contract, and I've received a couple of phone calls from interested contractors asking why we would be doing this. So these are contractors that could provide this service. When I explained to them the logic behind it, they said that's a great idea, good for the city. We're not interested in a piece of property. But with that said, this is going to be a public hearing, and for maybe the public that's not up to speed, and in case we have any other contractors, I'd like to just go through that quick PowerPoint. I know council's seen this several times, but I think if we have interested public or potentially contractors that may be concerned, this would explain um, the logic behind the process that we're going through. So as you all know, Markham and Sons, they just recently completed the construction of Elm Street Bridge, did a great job, um, we're very pleased with it. Moving forward, James? So a little about Markham and Sons, Redmond, Oregon-based company, thirty employees and growing, and they're interested in potentially relocating to Prineville. So the city owns a lot up in Baldwin Industrial Park. Um, we've owned it since nineteen ninety-six when the city went in and created all of those lots. Um, previously, we've heard from our realtor record that, you know, this potentially is worth about a hundred and fifty thousand. However, nothing's selling up there, there's quite a few vacant lots available. And so Markham and Sons being interested in coming to Prineville, they've proposed that they would like to build another bridge for us to trade for that piece of property. So here we have the Barnes Butte property, the city owns four hundred and sixty acres. Um, there's a hundred and sixty acres of BLM property for a grand total of six hundred and twenty acres. And this bridge would fix uh, access issue that we have near the Polish neighborhood. So that's one of the western accents, accesses, so moving forward. This is a zoom in of the Polish neighborhood and how they access the property. So Josh Smith has worked with Polish community. They've dedicated easements over trails, but we have um, a crossing of that wetland and stream. You can see there on the left-hand side, it's pretty much just jerry-rigged. There's little boards and bridges over there, and we'd like to provide better access for our citizens. So the next slide. So as part of the project that Markham just completed, they constructed a pedestrian bridge over the Ochko Creek, just downstream of where the um, vehicle bridge was. Next slide. So what that was, um, we were very pleased with pedestrian bridge. It's a pre-constructed bridge that was eighty feet in span. It included the abutments, the concrete deck, concrete bench, and very, very resilient bridge. What we're considering doing is, Markham would like to trade that city lot for a similar pedestrian bridge. The lot where we've decided is worth about a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, similar bridge that they did was a hundred and forty thousand. We would just add some maybe concrete approaches or something like that to get that up to an equal value. And the good thing about this is where Markham just recently completed a competitively bid project, we can use all the bid item prices that they used. So with that said, we have the opportunity with the expenditure of these funds in the construction of the bridge to use that as match money against other projects. So one that we'll definitely go for next year is an Oregon State Parks Local Government Grant. So this is state lottery dollars. They require a forty percent match, so with that hundred and fifty thousand dollar bridge, we could turn this into a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project. So there's potential to get another two hundred and twenty-five thousand that we could use to invest in Barnes Butte. And obviously, we try to get additional grants. So potentially, one of the items we're thinking about is if we were to put in the bridge and we were to receive the grant from Oregon State, we could do maybe the outer paved loop of the Barnes Butte property. This is a project that's identified in the master plan that will be coming to the city council soon to adopt. Um, as you see the red line there, that potential outer loop is going back to our wetland. That's exactly a five K, so like in our wetland, the outer loop we did is a five K. This could potentially be a five K. And then we would go after additional grants to construct an elevated walkway over the wetland area. So, you know, fun opportunity, we're pretty excited about it. With that said, I know I've brought this up to council several times. Hopefully, this answered some questions if there are people interested um, and want to contribute to the public hearing. So with that said, I would be happy to answer any questions the public may have. For Mr. Mayor, we would need to open this up to the public hearing.
I can talk a little bit before the public hearing.
Please.
So um, in, in the packet for council was a staff report regarding this public, or this um, this hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, what we're doing is it's a request for exemption for competition of a contract for a public improvement project. So uh, pursuant to Resolution twelve six six, the uh, council, generally with a public improvement contract, it must go to competitive bidding. However, it can be exempted based upon a number of factors, uh, which have been outlined in your packet and which have been provided uh, on our website since April twenty-ninth. In addition, uh, prior to approving an exemption, the council has to do a public hearing that was properly noticed fourteen days before it, which in this case it was, uh, the April twenty-ninth, uh, two thousand twenty edition of the Daily Journal of Commerce, as well as uh, noticed in a public newspaper, which was the Central Oregonian on May twelfth. Uh, this is a public hearing based upon our new, um, based upon our current regulations of COVID, and therefore Executive Order twenty sixteen will uh, will govern how we move forward. Uh, after the public hearing is open, uh, Mayor, you will need to ask our city recorder, Lisa Morgan, if there was any written comments that were provided. Uh, she would be able to answer that. Then uh, the public um, bridge, so to speak, will be open. You'll ask if anyone would like to speak. They would talk, um, our uh, IT department would identify that number, mute the other numbers on the phone. That person would be able to identify themselves and speak, and you would go through this process until you didn't hear anything on the public bridge. Um, and with that, unless there's any other questions or any questions, we would be able to move forward with the public hearing.
All right, I have no other questions. Does council have any questions about procedure or about the project yet? Okay, hearing none, I will open the public hearing. And first, um, Lisa Morgan, do we have any written comments to submit it?
There were no written comments submitted.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
James Wilson, do we have any, anyone wanting to speak on the uh, audio system?
We have several callers on the line. I'll go ahead and unmute all callers on the call-in line. If anyone would like to present public comment, please speak now.
Hello, this is uh, Eric Mills, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a resident of Prineville, I live on Northeast Lookout Avenue. And I am interested in finding out how to go about getting stop signs installed on some of the intersections up here in the Ochko and Heights neighborhood.
Eric, Eric, unfortunately, this is, this public hearing is specific for the uh, specific for the um,
The exemption.
The exemption on, on request for, for the location of the bridge.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
But that, but that's, that's all right. At the tail end of the, of our meeting, we will have another opportunity for visitors' appearances and requests. And you can, if you stay on, uh, you can come into that, that portion of the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, um, James, you have anyone else wanting to speak?
Oh, once again, unmute the public lines. If anyone would like to provide public comment on the exemption, please speak now.
I hear.
And no one's indicating.
I do not hear anyone else. James, thank you, um.
There's nobody coming forward to uh, speak to council, nor was there any written comments, so you can close the public hearing if you wish.
I will close the public hearing with, inasmuch as there are no comments to be made. All right, council, do you have any questions? None?
I have none.
Would anyone like to make, okay, would anyone like to make a motion to um, to exempt from competitive bidding the Barnes Butte Pedestrian Bridge project and directly award the project to Markham and Sons LLC based on the draft findings presented by staff?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Papke, I move to exempt the competitive bidding the Barnes Butte Pedestrian Bridge project and directly award the project to Markham and Sons LLC based on the draft findings presented by staff.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, sorry, Teresa, second.
Teresa? Teresa, thank you, thank you for the second. Um, to the council, any questions, concerns before we move for a vote? Hearing none, uh, Gail Merritt, how do you vote?
She was on mute.
Gail, you're on mute. Gail, please unmute yourself, thank.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Janet?
Aye.
Patricia Youngman?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Mr. Papke?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well, so we have unanimous passage of the motion. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on, and I.
Mayor, real quick, just, I neglected to state, uh, at the next council meeting, there'll be a resolution modifying the decision that was made.
Okay, so we will have a resolution at the next meeting. Thank you. Mr. Forrester, you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mayor, Steve Forrester, city manager. Just a quick reminder to the council, I think it's important that we let everybody know that city projects continue. We reported on this la, two weeks ago at the council, we'll report on it again. That includes the uh, ASR project with social distancing. That project continues to move forward. The uh, Community Development Block Grant, senior center management of that grant remodel project for our seniors, that continues to move forward. The tenth and Main Street realignment uh, will commence later this year. That will, is planned, planned, and will continue to move forward. I think it's just important to note that our city-based projects are continuing with social distancing. So the next thing I'd like to report on is just to make a comment that we're working closely, the mayor, staff, uh, with Crete County Court and with Crete County Health Department, we heard from Mariel. And I just wanted to take a quick minute and thank Mariel and her team for the work that they did in the application process for the Phase One reopening with the state, and just, just give Mariel and her team another round of thanks for that hard work to get that going. We're depending on her for a lot as we move forward. Also, I reminded the council at the beginning of the meeting that we have, Captain Larry is our interim chief while Dale's out of pocket for a few days. Uh, this is law enforcement week, and uh, many of the counselors recall a tradition we have, recognizing members of our law enforcement community that have fallen, our brothers and sisters who gave the ultimate sacrifice for the protection of our citizens. And we recognize that with the ceremony over on the courthouse steps each year. And I'd like to just uh, ask Larry of what uh, what your plans are this year uh, in uh, commemorating uh, the fallen brethren uh, in our public safety uh, area. So Larry, could you just give us a little update and then? So Larry, could you just give us a little update and let everybody know what's going on this, this year?
You're muted, Larry.
Larry, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm new to this.
That's okay, you're doing great.
The law enforcement week is celebrated in Washington DC and that actually has been canceled. And due to COVID this year, normally we have a flag raising ceremony in front of the courthouse with, along with the sheriff's office and we invite people out there, but to avoid a large group this year, we are just going to be raising our own flags. The sheriff's office will raise theirs. We will raise ours in the morning, probably 8:00 AM on actual, the actual LEO Day, which is Friday the 15th. We will also put a post on Facebook letting everyone know that it is law enforcement week and Friday is actually law enforcement day, so.
Thank, thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
And finally, tonight, some very, very good news we got late last week from the Finance Department under Director Liz Schutie's leadership. We successfully negotiated a very favorable rate on a refunding that's specific to the new public safety building for Larry and his team. We anticipate enough funding out of this financial transaction that we're moving forward with to fully complete the project for the police operations, the 911 dispatch operations, and the moving of our IT department to that location. So this is very good news and a lot of really good work and hard work by Liz Schutie and her team. And with that being said, I know Liz has joined us tonight. And Liz, could you just give us some specifics and maybe some timing on what to expect in the next month or month and a half on completing this very important and very competitive transaction?
Sure. Good evening, councilors, mayor. We are, I'm, we're very excited that we accepted a bid from J.P. Morgan, or better known as Chase, a 15-year financing, new borrowing of 2.4 million and an amount to pay off the original loan of four point, excuse me, of 4 million. The original rate was at 3.15%. The new rate is 1.73%. This will result in a savings on the $4 million of 323,600. We'll be closing that loan on May 28th.
May 28th?
And the total borrowing will be 5.958 million.
Liz, just to confirm, is it closing on May 28th or June 30th?
They changed that today.
Oh, very good. That's very good news. So I just wanted, I know that we...
Yeah, they, our, our original due date is on 6/1 is when we normally pay our payments. And I got a new rate schedule after we spoke at the Finance Committee meeting and they had changed the date to 5/28. So that's when we should be closing on that loan.
Great news.
So once again, councilors, Steve Forrester, City Manager, hats off to Liz and her team for the successful acceptance of this bid. And just a reminder to the council that, you know, our community and our city's financial position is, is very, very, very strong. That is another testimonial to our ability to get lendings on a general obligation bond in this low of interest rate and our ability to, in essence, invest in a, what will be a very modern and effective and efficient public safety building without going to our taxpayers to ask them to bond for this acquisition. So a tremendous accomplishment by our Finance Department and our, really our whole staff, our whole team and the management of our finances to allow us to make this kind of a transaction a possibility.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, let's move on. Committee reports, does anyone have a committee report that they would like to make this evening? Steve, do you want to give us an update?
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to say, we haven't had any official meetings, but we have been having emails circulate. There is going to be a public presentation on the 21-inch rule for the, for the e-site screen. So that ought to be very interesting. Right now, the EA is open for wild horse management. So if you have some comments that you would like to put in on the wild horse management in the Ochicos, I'd encourage you to do that. I think the closing date on that is coming up here relatively soon.
Thank you. Steve, would you give us an update on the Bowman Dam project? I mean, we've been meeting with, on that and the habitat, the FERC license and the HCP.
Yeah, so, so there's two efforts specific. I'm also going to ask Eric Klon to participate in this explanation, but there's really two water-related efforts going on at the same time. One is a hydro project on Bowman Dam that's a collaboration between the city, the county, and Ochico Irrigation District, much in the same fashion that the Crooked River legislation was conducted. So what, where we're at with that, we do have an active FERC license that's been accepted. We are working through the process with FERC. As part of that requirement, there's a state law with respect to Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife that calls for a passage solution if the dam in question is altered in any way, which of course installing a hydro project would alter the dam. Does not alter how the water is transmitted through the dam or managed. That, our project has nothing to do with the flow. Those will remain as they are. But at any rate, there is a passage requirement where ODFW can require us to build out a passage or fish ladder. And that's very expensive. It would, it makes the economics of the project null and void. And so there's an opportunity for us to meet with what they call the task force, the Passage Task Force, and then on to the Commission of Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife for a waiver. And we have a scheduled time, Eric can speak to that. I believe it's in May or June, I'm not sure. I think it's June, actually. But anyway, so we do have a time to go up and present our case to the task force and on to the commission for a waiver consideration. And I'm gonna let Eric jump in here in a minute. And then on the Habitat Conservation Plan, that is to another project that the city, along with the Deschutes Basin Board of Control, the other irrigation districts in the central Oregon region, we're the only city that's participating in that effort. And that's to give us protection from Endangered Species Act and from any legal action in the event of a take situation where there's, fish have been harmed. So the HCP gives us legal protection from being sued, in essence. That process is very close to finding its end. In other words, being completed. We're, we're struggling a little bit with a few issues, mainly on the Deschutes, which were part of that basin, as it relates to the spotted frog and some flow regimes specific to the Deschutes. Having said that, there's also a little bit of consternation and confusion on the Crooked River flows because those flows, actually part of those flows are consumed by North Unit through a pumping station near Smith Rock and right, quite close to where it converges with the Deschutes. So we think we've had some progress on that. We anticipate a few more meetings before that's completed. So, you know, big news, if we can get the HCP done here in this calendar year would be fabulous. We think it's a possibility. It looks a little better than it did a couple of weeks ago. That's on the HCP. On the Bowman Hydro, we have a long road to hoe and we have a very, a very difficult situation with ODFW that we have a lot of uncertainty with at this time. And then I'd just like Eric to put in his, his comments too. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, no, I think you did a great job. The biggest, you know, the big hurdle, the go-no-go for the hydro project is that meeting with the, the Fish Passage Task Force, as Steve mentioned. That's in late June. And really, that'll be, that'll be the culmination of about five years of work. We'll see what they have to say. We're hopeful that we can persuade them to understand the benefits of the project. And, yeah, we're just moving forward.
Any, any comment on the HCP side of things, Eric? Did I miss anything there that you could think of?
You know, on the HCP, we've been working on that since, I believe, 2009. And we've made our proposal to the agencies, the agencies are going through it, we're right in the final negotiations. And so, you know, for the city of Prineville, this is going to be a wonderful deal. A lot of the projects that we had previously done will be the, the good things we needed to do to get the HCP. For instance, like the wetland project, all the water we're putting back in the river, that essentially is good enough to provide us with the HCP. Some of the irrigation districts are really going to be hit hard with their requests from the agencies, very limited flows to their patrons. And so, you know, we have a ways to go, but we're getting quite close. Hopefully, hopefully we'll, we'll have this behind us in six months or so.
Any, any questions of Eric, are I on this?
Thank you. No, just to add to it, though, we have been working with Representative Vicki Breeze-Iverson on, on the Fish Passage waiver to, to make sure that we have support there, which we certainly do from her, to assist us in getting that Fish Passage waiver. It's, it's looking more encouraging, but there's, there's no guarantee yet at this point, so.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Can I add something real quick about my committee meeting? Tim is actually watching or listening and he said that the wild horse comments are actually due on Monday, the 18th. So over this next weekend or when you get some time, if you're interested in reading that study and their proposals and comment, it is due on Monday. And then I also looked up the, the save the dates on the, the 21-inch rule and what they're looking at there. Looks like they had a science forum yesterday. An intergovernmental technical workshop is going to be tomorrow. A partner technical workshop is the 15th. And then general information sessions, sessions, excuse me, are going to be scheduled soon. So that ought to be an interesting one with our logging community when we start getting into the public general information session.
Thank you very much, Teresa.
Yep.
Okay, well then, let's move on to resolutions. And first, we have Resolution Number 1438, a resolution authorizing the sale of real property to Markham &amp; Sons LLC. Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This, the council may remember, we had a public hearing about this two weeks ago. This also segues from the PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Klon presented a little while ago. It's actually that property that was referenced in that PowerPoint that we're speaking about today, right now, excuse me. The council, after the public hearing, determined to sell the property to Markham &amp; Sons. This is simply the resolution codifying that. It is contingent, of course, upon the bridge project. I have been working with our real, city realtor, Mike Warren, regarding the negotiations and this would carry it forward, as well as give authorization to the city manager and the mayor to sign any such document that came, came out of those negotiations.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on, on Resolution Number 1438? Okay, if there are no questions, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1438?
I would move to, oh, this is Teresa. I would move to, to approve Resolution 1438.
Is there a second?
This is Gail. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to approve Resolution Number 1438, a resolution authorizing the sale of real property to Markham &amp; Sons LLC. Are there any questions, comments or concerns? Okay, hearing none. We'll go, call for a vote. Gail, how do you vote?
Aye.
Janet, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patricia?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Jeff, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. So we have unanimous approval on Resolution Number 1438. Let's move on to Resolution Number 1439, a resolution approving a 2020 fund exchange agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Transportation, or ODOT, regarding street rehabilitation within the city of Prineville. Mr. Smith, are you with us? Scott Smith?
This is Eric Klon, City Engineer. Unfortunately, Scott Smith is a little ill and wasn't able to attend, so I can walk through this resolution. So every year, we receive Surface Transportation Program dollars through, or from the federal government. So this is federal gas tax. With these funds coming through the federal government, there's a lot of requirements associated with, so just everything that's associated with federal dollars. So the NEPA process, archaeological surveys, a myriad of, of requirements. And so what most local agencies do is we trade those federal dollars for state dollars that don't have any of those requirements for 94 cents on the dollar. And then ODOT bundles all of those dollars into big projects and then does all of the required federal studies. In this, in the staff report, there are a few little mistakes. We'd actually budgeted $117,000, so this came in a little under budget. And this is budgeted to come into our Public Works Fund, Fund 73 rather than the Transportation Fund. Historically, we had brought this into the Transportation Fund and that's why Scott had that. The last couple of years, we've been bringing it into the Public Works Fund to limit the transfers from the Transportation Fund to Public Works. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
First question I would have, Eric, is if, if the number, are the, the numbers in the resolution are incorrect? Is that, is that true?
No, just in the staff report.
Oh, in the staff report? Okay.
So in the staff report, he had that we had budgeted $110,000. Mayor Effelman, we had actually budgeted $117,000. And then he had it going to the Transportation Fund when it's actually gone to the Public Works Fund. So minor, but just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1439?
This is Janet. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1439.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Patricia. I'll second that one.
Patricia, thank you for seconding it. We have a motion with a second to approve Resolution Number 1439, a resolution approving a 2020 fund exchange agreement with State of Oregon Department of Transportation regarding street rehabilitation within the city of Prineville. Are there any questions or concerns or anxieties about moving this forward? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Gail?
Aye.
Janet, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patricia?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye also. We have a unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then lastly, we have visitors' appearances and requests. Eric Mills, if you are still with us, would you like to speak to the council? James, is he available?
Yeah, hello. This is Eric Mills.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Yep, I live up in the Ochico Heights neighborhood in Prineville. And I was wondering how I could go about requesting some stop signs to be installed on some of the four-way intersections that currently have no stop signs.
You would have cursed that one, Eric.
So Eric, this is Eric Klon, City Engineer. Um, you, you know...
You know, we've got this request several times. If, if you wanted, I'd, I'd be happy to meet you up there, and you could show me your concerns, and we could put some traffic counters out and see what we could do to fix the problem. So if you wanted to just call down to City Hall anytime and ask for Eric, I'd be happy to chat with you, and maybe we could meet up and see what issues you're, you're facing against.
Okay, so, call down to City Hall and talk to Eric Klon?
Yeah, just call down to City Hall, ask for Eric Klon, and then we can figure out a time that we can meet up there, and you can show me what's going on, and we'd be happy to take a look.
And with City Hall closed...
That sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, with City Hall closed, you'll need to just phone in and, and reach him that way. That will be the most convenient.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem, we'll chat soon.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Check with James, make sure that nobody...
James? James, is there anyone else?
The public line's been unmuted, but no one is coming forward.
Okay, are there any last comments from the council? Or a motion to adjourn?
This is Teresa, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
This is Janet, I'll second.
Janet, Gail, vote?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.